All right. I'll go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the city council here on October 5th. Councilmember Saunders is doing his best to join us on Zoom. If he arrives, I will announce his presence. We've had a little technical difficulties. In the meantime, please remember to speak into the mic as good as you can with these masks on so that folks can hear us because it does muffle us a bit. Invocation and pledge of allegiance will be councilmember Gardner.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day, Lord, and we are especially thankful for the wonderful changes of the seasons that you brought to us here, Father. Thank you so much for the cool air and the times that we can enjoy these beautiful days, God. We thank you for this city that we live in, and we're so thankful for the first responders that live and that work in this community to help to keep our city safe and all of our citizens protected, Father. And we're thankful for all their efforts for us here in this city. Lord, tonight, as we come together to do the business of the people, Father, we just ask that we can do it with wise minds, Lord, that we can do what is best for the citizens so that we can continue to help Mammell to be a great city for the future, Father. In Christ name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding. It looks like councilmember Saunders has joined us. Can you hear us? Councilmember Saunders? If you're talking, it looks like you're muted. Can you hear us all right, councilmember Saunders? I'll take that as a no. Okay. So first order of business then is special guests and announcements. I'd like to introduce you to Michael Johnson, our customer service representative with Entergy, who has brought some folks with him here just to talk about a couple of the outages we've had and to answer any questions that the council may have. Mr. Johnson, please, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon to the folks in the back. I'm Michael Johnson. I am the most recently appointed customer service manager for the Mammell area. If any of the members were familiar with Mr. Jay Hartman in the past, I am the new customer service manager fulfilling his role. This evening, I'm here with my regional customer service supervisor, which is Mr. Ventrell Thompson. And we also have our senior Entergy engineer, Mr. Mike Keerly. Just as a little bit of a note, we've been invited to come here and talk about some of the possible reliability issues and outages that Mammell has recently experienced. But I wanted to preface our presentation today to let you guys know you do have two friends that are going to be doing the presentation. Between Mike Keerly and myself, we have a combined of about 40 years of living here in Mammell. I myself have about 20. Mike has about 25. Also, just want to let you know for those of you that have experienced the most two recent outages, we experienced them with you as well, okay? The good thing is, is through the whole process, Mike and I were both in place when the outages occur, so we know more or less step by step what we were going through during the outage. At this time, we want to do a presentation to you guys to kind of let you know what we've been doing, number one, over the past 10 years, what we've been doing really in about the last three years, and where we hope to take Mammell's infrastructure and reliability to the next level over the next couple of years. Ms. Timmons, if you could just go to slide one, please. Mammell is presently served by three, not two, but three substations. The most recent one came online here just a couple of months ago. I'm sorry. I don't want to ignore anyone. But we do have three substations that are taking care of our present needs as well as we have excess capacity for future growth as well. So we want to assure everyone that we have enough capacity. The recent outages have nothing to do with capacity issues, okay? Outages are usually caused by equipment failure but are influenced by outside factors. Common factors are lightning, high winds, squirrels, rodents, we have trees, we have invasive vines, we have falling limbs, and we have vehicles. Of all of those, five that we've just mentioned, the most important one that has recently influenced a rash of the outages have been vehicles. We call those PID, which is physical, is it physical?
Public inflicted damage.
Specifically, we can, we'll get down to the two, but we do have measures in place that when we do have outages, we have substation breakers that are designed to either mitigate an outage or help us in the restoration of it. We have reclosers as well as fuses. Some of this is done to protect our equipment. Others are also used to allow us to do what we call switching processes, okay? That's where you have an outage, and we have another circuit available, or we'll have a substation available where we can try to backfeed, okay? In our area, anytime our outages get above a specific number, then we automatically will look at trying to do our switching process right off the top because our intent is always to get as many customers on as quickly as possible. Once we've identified what the issue is, then we try to isolate that issue, and we try to do our repairs on our system with as many customers already restored as possible to try to minimize as many that are affected throughout the whole outage. And on both of our last two outages, we did go through this process based on the number of customers that were without power. Next slide, please. Mammell is presently serviced by eight different circuits. Each one of those color codes signify a specific circuit that's being served off of a substation. The recent addition of our last substation has not been updated yet. As soon as we can get some information on the exact layout and get the plat, we're going to overlay that. And hopefully, next time I visit with the mayor, I can provide him with this, just to kind of show him a layout of how our circuits are structured. Our most two recent outages were on that D-810. It's kind of a lavender color that you can see up there. It is primarily mostly underground customers that are on that particular segment, but we have an overhead feed that brings power into that, okay? So the opportunity for any type of destruction on there is going to be from either an overhead or it could be something that's underground, either bad cabling or something like that. Let's go to the next one. Okay. In particular, on D-810, Tuesday, September 8th, outage time 3:40 PM, there was a commercial grade vehicle operating in and around the city of Mammell that had its bed up, from what we understand that was described to us. We think it was a dump truck that had left the scene and hadn't lowered down their hydraulics yet, took out two poles, and also destroyed two spans of primary wiring, okay? And if you know how far a span is, and you know how much work goes into repairing two poles as well as removing the equipment as well as reattaching it, it presents an issue for us.
Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry. I was trying to reconnect to Zoom. If you'll give me just a minute.
Okay.
I apologize. Okay, you should be good. I apologize.
Okay. All right. I stand corrected. I said two primary poles, there were three spans of wiring that were actually tightened down. Okay. We good to go, Mayor?
I thought we were before, so.
All right. Okay. On the outage on Tuesday, September 8th, we did go into our switching process. I was here in town when we actually experienced that, and I can tell you the crews were out right away. Usually when we have an outage, you guys have to keep in mind that we've got to first and foremost, get a serviceman that we have available from wherever he or she is to over to the job site, and then, well, we'll just say the location, then he or she has to find out exactly what the issue is, call back in, and then from there, we can begin to gather together our resources. Serviceman is usually one person. Primarily, one man can't repair two broken poles and three spans of primary wiring that's down. But once that was identified, what the problem was, we knew how many customers were out. We immediately went into our switching process, and in doing that, we were able to bring on about 1,000 customers within the first 95 minutes. I think it was 95 minutes that left us with a remainder of about 1,500 customers. Now, the switching process becomes important at this point because we basically go from point to point, seeing what the issue is and seeing if we can backfeed those customers or switch them off to a different circuit to isolate the problem so that we can work around there. In this particular situation, due to the amount of work that was needed to be done, it did take us up to about 11:30 that evening in order to get power restored. But again, that's not equipment failure on Entergy's part. That was someone running into our facilities and destroying them completely, okay? The second outage, which I experienced as well, was on a Sunday. Power off, it was about 2:30 PM. This particular outage was very indicative of kind of the environment that we work in. Now, believe it or not, it was a three-foot crossarm on a wood pole, okay? That's an overhead service for us. The crossarm broke. There are two crossarms that support like this. Now, this was about five days after Laura blew through Arkansas. The outage occurred on what we call a blue sky day. You look up, there's not a cloud in the sky, no lightning, no thunder. Usually when we see that, we know it's either going to be damage that had already been done and it's finally given out, or it's just fatigue on the equipment. On a wooden crossarm, there's no way for us to tell. This is a piece of equipment that's outside, that's exposed. We do pole line inspections where we look at the pole, we determine what the condition is, we look and do a visual on the equipment. You've got two crossarms up there. If there's a crossarm that is damaged, usually we're going to find it either on a pole line inspection, which is a scheduled thing, but it doesn't occur every month, doesn't necessarily occur every year. If you take a look out there and look at all the poles and wiring, we do have a scheduled timeframe. It's usually on average somewhere between three to five years that we do a specific circuit, we'll pick it out, and we do about 20% of our circuits throughout the state each year. That way, we get 100% turnover after about year five. So we know on average, your circuit's going to be inspected at a minimum of about five years, okay? On this particular situation, we had to find the outage. It was in a vehicle inaccessible area, so we knew we didn't have a commercial vehicle that had impacted it. More than likely, it was caused by storm damage or something along that line. Once the serviceman found it out, found out, I'm sorry, what the issue was, we had to gather up our resources at that point, which again, it's on a Sunday. We've got to go through a call out, find out who's got some hours available that we can get out here in the field and go ahead and get started. Took us a little time just to get that going, but that wasn't a major issue. We had to go through our switching again. We had to find the issue. We had to be able to get our vehicles in there, and from my understanding, our trucks had to periodically go through some areas that had some wood brushing that didn't allow us to get access to our equipment, whether it be a pole or a switching device or something along that line. So we had to actually do some wood cutting as well. The outage again was about 2:30. By the time we identified where it was, got our crews together, it was getting pretty close to about 4:30 or 5 o'clock. We were losing a little bit of sunlight. My crews, everything is predicated on safety. So whenever they're out in the field, they've got to move at a slow, deliberate pace so that the guys don't injure themselves or injure those that are working with them, okay? Let's see. Switching is done. Picked up about 1,300 customers after about two hours of the, that the outage began. I'm on the circuit that didn't get power back within the first two hours, okay? So we were able to pick up the remaining 1,200 customers later on that evening, about 11:45 that evening, we had power restored. Again, we had just basically some issues of getting to the facility, then going through our switching process. We have to get orders from what's called our DLC. They actually write down step by step the process in which our servicemen and or crews have to operate this switching process. And again, safety is the issue, and we go from point to point, either closing out or opening back up one segment. We have to see if it's going to hold. Again, the way Mammell is set up, we'd have to get power either back end or we got a radio feed. So we've got to figure out how to connect this, get people hot without burning down the existing lines as well, because now we're basically shifting all customers from, excuse me, from three different circuits to possibly two, because we've got a damaged one here. But we've got to make sure that those lines can hold, okay? So again, safety is our key factor here. In this particular case, it's hard to say, you know, what caused that crossarm to break. You know, our feeling, because we've dealt with storms before, you get a Hurricane Four that hits land, you get high winds that blew up through Arkansas as well. I mean, there's no way to kind of prevent that other than as soon as we know about the issue, we try to get right on it to make some repairs on there, okay? Next slide, please. We want to talk about our underground system because again, there's a big part of that D-810 that's serviced on underground. We've got a bunch of cable that's buried down there, but things that affect the overhead system can have implications for underground. For example, D-810 that we showed, it is fed underground first. There's an underground dip, and then that underground dip services everyone on the back end of D-810, which is primarily going to be southwest, my, southwest Mammell. Okay. All right. Okay. The benefits of overhead service, of course, depending on the situation, it can be quickly serviced, depending on the situation. Underground, we've got buried cable and conduit benefits. It protects us from soil as well as the surrounding, and it is easier to replace when you get up in there and try to get it out. It usually don't have much problem. We'll either do a cutaway and just run a new line onto something. But when you have a system like Mammell's where you got partial overhead, then the rest underground, whenever you see a storm in the area, even though if you're like me and you live in the 810 circuit, it's mostly underground, you still get scared when you hear of a storm because you know how it's being fed, okay? We also have possible disruptions to our underground wiring. We got boring that occurs throughout the city. You've got a lot of construction going on, and you do have contractors out there that sometimes those markings are not correct as they should be, and they will sometimes cut into our service, okay? You've got excessive rain creates a lot of additional pressure on top of the ground, which affects the buried cable up under the ground as well. Arkansas is not as bad. I used to work with a lot of customers in the Louisiana market, and because Louisiana's, most of it's already at sea level or below, you got a lot of excess pressure. And that came to light when Katrina hit us at first. We spent billions of dollars in that central New Orleans, Louisiana market just replacing a lot of the buried cable as well as gas piping, because we do electric and gas in that area. So I'm just trying to give you a little bit of background on the different factors that affect us. So you can have inclement weather, and of course, you get high winds, tree limbs, things like that, broke poles. You get a wind gust, it can really affect your poles as well. Then you have clear day, you got an underground service, and you think nothing's going to affect you, and then somebody hits a pole down the road, you know, and this is what you're going to get from time to time, okay? But on those two cases that we're looking at, one was totally out of Entergy's control, the other was facilities that even we're not sure exactly how they were affected by it. All we know is that one of the crossarms gave out, and it was just probably a matter of time before the other one just couldn't take that load and just gave out altogether. But again, that was an overhead situation that affected thousands of customers with an underground feed, okay? Next slide, please. Okay. Mike, you want to come up and talk a little bit about some of the completion work that's been done for reliability? Again, Michael is representing our engineering group.
We have a pretty much ongoing cable replacement program. Sometimes it's planned, sometimes it's not. It's premature failures or the cable's been overstressed. Sometimes in the past, before we had more reliable programs to determine what loads are, we probably even helped that along when we tried to switch and switch too much load onto something. But if you look at the way Mammell is fed, we feed it overhead from Mammell East, which is down across the Country Club Parkway, south of town, and then it goes underground through those areas throughout most of the south end of Mammell. From Morgan, the circuit that got snagged by the truck, we were overhead along 365 Highway, and then it goes back down along the west side of Mammell, the Star Farm area, and then it ties back in where it hits the Country Club, Mammell Country Club, and then it goes underground. So we got, it's kind of wrapped around, and it feeds back all inside underground. And so you've seen these big green boxes sits out there, and those are switchgear. And they're mainly kind of like a breaker. You go in and out, and then it's got fuse positions that runs our laterals. So if a load or something faults, it'll just take it out to the fuse and knock, knock the whole circuit out back to the substation. So we have those just intertwined within the city. So we're constantly trying to guess when stuff is going bad and constantly looking for new technology. We have a focus program that kind of looks at the reliability, the protective devices. Where new technology can help us out. We've switched from the old reclosers to something that's still kind of like a recloser, but it's newer technology. Basically, what a recloser is, if you get a fault on an overhead line, say a limb falls and it goes to ground or phase to phase, it's going to trip that recloser, and then it will cycle and it will try it again. If the limb falls off, which is always our preference, then you're allowed to stay on. Sometimes it don't, and it may go two or three more times, and then we got to come out and repair it. It's either done tore down the line or it's still lodged up there or whatever. In underground, you don't really get that forgiveness, you know? If it, if, and I'll give some typical examples, snakes, possums, coons, anything that gets up into one of those green boxes, and a lot of times, it will fall off, but since it's on just a one revolution or one shot, we've got to send somebody out, find out. We've got new technology that kind of gets away where you got a forgiveness. It sends a pulse out, looks at it. If the animal falls off, then it'll come back on. So we're looking at all that. Most of the stuff that we have goes through some kind of a test period. We don't just buy something and throw it into the system that creates more problems than we've already got. So we work through that. And as far as inspections, we do have that. We have a pole treatment company that goes through, and it cycles, and it kind of depends on the reliability. If we got an area where reliability is failing, then we give it more attention, look at it closer, and try to remedy that. Next slide, please. Now, this right here is looking at, we call it SADI and SAFI. That's like a system average interruptions, the duration of the incident, and then that, so that's, the one has the D in its duration, the other is frequency, and that's SAFI. And so we compare these numbers, and if you look back, going back to 2015, the red one is the one that's seems to be the highest in most interest there. It's decreased until last year, and it went up, and I don't, I don't really know the exact reason that it went up, but it's fallen back. Hopefully, we'll continue a downtrend in that. And let's see the next slide, please. Okay. Years ago, when Mammell first started, it was the desire to have underground utilities, particularly power, and it was direct buried cable at the time. You didn't put it in conduit, and because of the rock component around here, if you've been around Mammell, you know that you go to build, and you may have a lot that don't have any rock on it, and other is, it's just all rock. And so when you have rock and that constant pressure and working on that cable, eventually it's going to fail for you. And so since then, we've gone to conduit systems. Developer pays to put that in and usually installs it, and we install the cable. So it's a better long term. As I said before, like the IPOs, we got new recloser type equipment going in that we're installing around town. Example of that's over at the post office. There's one there that looks a little different than the normal box. And I don't know the prioritization of circuits. I mean, we look at anything, but the way that we switch around, you don't really ever know. Where I'm at, I may be on Morgan D-810 that failed other day, and then at other times, I may be switched off of the Mammell East circuits underground, and that depends on what else is going on at the time. So you just never really, really know which one you're on at the time, but I can only recall maybe three outages this year where I live, and two of them come within five days of each other. So that was very unfortunate, and I don't like being without power either. And so I moved to Mammell because I felt like that this was a better system, and it certainly is from where I came from. What else we got on the next short term? I think Michael had already talked about the MacArthur Substation. We're bringing it on. We're looking at continued, let's see, it's new equipment. We, yeah, we do the switchgear inspections. Usually if a car don't get one, and it gets to looking pretty bad, and it starts failing, we'll replace those. Anything else you want to add on that, or? All right.
Thank you. Next slide, please, Ms. Timmons. Okay. Budgeted projects for work completed. This, I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of how much money we've spent over the last 10 years. Installed switches on Murphy Drive and shifted load to improve capacity in 2010, $35,000. Reconducted along Wade Boulevard, improving capacity, $35,000. You can see in 2014, we spent another 10. What I wanted to do is get to the big one. What I wanted to do is get to the big one, which is the last one. We built the new MacArthur Substation. Rebuilt two feeders along MacArthur Boulevard and built new feeder along Kelly Road, along Windsong Road to improve capacity and in anticipation of load growth on the east side of Maumell around the new I-40 interchange. Completed 2019, $10 million. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, this is where, okay, we've told you where we are. We've told you the type of work that we've done as well as what's ongoing. This is what we're proposing. Again, this is a proposed plan project. And we're saying propose because we've identified projects that we wanna have specifically done to either improve your capacity, improve your reliability, as well as take care of any underlying issues that may be contributing to additional or future outages. These are plans that we submit up to our review board. It is reviewed by Entergy's engineering group. And they kinda look at the projects, look at the money we've got dedicated, look at the type of work that we're also proposing. And then as a group, they will decide out of these nine projects, which ones make the board, which ones don't. And of course, we're like a lot of you people that are in here that own businesses. We have a budget and we've gotta maintain that budget. So we have to be selective on what we're picking. But trust me, we are very conscious of trying to maintain and always are trying to improve on our reliability for this area here. But I wanted to kinda give you an idea of what the dollars are that could be impacted if these projects are approved. We talk about reconducting along Cook Road landing west of North Shore Drive. I think they just opened up that new restaurant out there too. So we're anticipating some possible new activity out there. So we're asking to invest in an estimated $75,000 to improve that. We're taking a look at installing capacitors on Count Massey, $25,000. Take a look at installing new breaker on Maumell East Substation, $1.5 million. You can just kinda go down the line. But if you take a look at that very last one again, we're also talking about adding substation capacity and build new feeders in the Maumell-Morgan interchange estimated at $20 million. Okay? Now I wanna make sure you guys understand, these are proposed projects. So if we're talking about this next year, some of these may have made the cut, some may not. Some may get shifted to the next year, okay? But overall, you can see, we just spent $10 million. We're talking about another $20 million, you know, if we can get funding. Now, all of these may not make the cut, but we're pretty sure some of these will, okay? As you look at these, of course, the natural question's gonna be, well, you got these teed up as proposed projects. Do you have a date on it? No, we don't. Because again, it has to go through the review and the approval process and it's gotta fit within the budget that corporate has established for Arkansas construction for the next coming year. Okay? Next slide, please. We're about done, I promise. Is that it? Okay. At this time, would you guys like to entertain any questions for us?
Councilmember Scott?
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming and thank you for this good explanation. I was an engineer for a telephone company, so I understand kind of the things that you're talking about there, particularly the funding of projects and developing a five-year plan. But one thing I did, that you did say that wasn't addressed in any of the documents that I saw here, the duration of the second outage was in part due to a lack of clearing of the easement under the pole line. And you don't see that very often. Usually when you see a pole line even going through a forest, there's a pretty clear path underneath it. Is that an ongoing maintenance thing? And are you looking at these areas again?
We do have what is called a vegetation budget. And on D-810, I believe it is a circuit, the complete circuit is going to be evaluated. Robert White, okay, that's one of my coworkers. He lives here in Maumell too, so he has a vested interest. But I believe D-810 is due to be looked at and/or trimmed as well. That was not the issue though, okay?
No, I understand that, but getting to it was not the problem.
Getting to it, yeah. And I did re-verify that with our supervisor that was over both of the outages. And he did indicate that we did have to, as he said, go to a couple of areas where we had to get up into it, which means we gotta kinda cut it out so that it's safe enough for our guys to get up in there, safe enough to move our equipment or extend our buckets up into it. On D-810 over here, you know, you got the railroad spur that runs along beside there. And between the railroad spur and the three phases that goes north and south along that line, you've got nothing but woods. And a lot of times, you know, our guys are having to get clearance to get up in there. And we gotta pull out a chainsaw and start cutting as if we were a tree trimming crew. So I got a serviceman now that's gotta get off the truck or I got a crew that's gotta get out and clear out, make sure we can get enough room to get our equipment up in there, which operates safely. So that is an issue, but it's an issue that has a budget tied to it and we do pay attention to it. And we try to work these circuits in a systematic, timely manner.
Thank you.
Really quickly, councilmember Saunders, I believe we've finally got him back in and have for most of the presentation. Can you hear us still?
Yes, I can. I can't see anything, but I can hear.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Tierney?
Yes, I live in, and thanks again for coming by to talk to us. I live in an older section of Maumell which had some of the first cable that was laid into the ground.
If I could get you to pull that mic a little closer, please. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. I live, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. I live in an older section of Maumell which had some of the first cable that was laid in the area. And we have a number, I've lived out there about 26 years and I had a number of outages due to failures in the actual cable where they're having to come out to patch it. And obviously, I've had a lot of conversations with the repair fellows who have been working on it. And they've told me that Energy had a budget set aside to actually change out whole sections of some of that oldest cable, but just hadn't been doing it. Is there any plans to change out some of the older cable in the areas of Maumell that are constantly being patched?
On one of the slides, we did reference. We're continuously changing that out, sir, for the direct buried. And again, our preference is to try to go to buried with conduit in there. That is a continuous process for us. I can find out the circuit that you're on and see if we have anything that is planned for that. But I don't have an answer for you right now, but I can get you one, Mr. Tierney.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I'll just need to get your service address before I leave.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, are you gonna take some questions from the audience or is there some people that are gonna speak public comment wise on this?
I do have a, the third public comment in line is on.
Okay, all right, thanks. I'm just gonna ask you a general question. It sounded like maybe that one issue was from Hurricane Laura, maybe it dislodged it. And I actually had branches fall out of my trees three days later after that went through. Did you all actually have much in the way of damage from Laura coming through or was that sort of surprisingly light?
No, sir. Mr. Thompson might be able to say a little bit more.
I don't need a long answer, I was just curious.
Good evening, everyone. I can address that. We had most of our damage in the south part of the state, El Dorado, Magnolia. And then we had a lot of damage in the northeast part of the state. Here in the central part of the state, there wasn't as much damage. But we had customers out over a week in the south part of the state.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. I just wanna, thank you, Mr. Johnson. We were on the phone, it seems like, the entire time and you kept reiterating that you were out of power too.
My wife thought I was cheating with you.
And so I appreciate, I think the communication between at least you and I has been really good throughout this event. I appreciate that Energy went to social media during one of the events and was sharing what was going on. If I had it to do over again, I would've then gone on the city's social media and shared what y'all put out there. But I appreciated you doing the best to keep people up to date and would just encourage that behavior in the future.
Thank you, sir.
And so thank you all for coming out with a very thorough presentation. Actually, if you don't mind, I will go to public comment here in just a minute and there will be some comments, I believe.
Do I let them come to the podium?
What's that?
Do I need to step away from the podium, let someone else speak?
Just don't take off right after we're done, if you don't mind giving you a few minutes. Again, thank you very much for coming out. Are there any additional questions or comments? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next item for business is the approval of the minutes for the September 21st regular meeting. I believe there was an amendment that was made.
A new copy for everyone to include councilmember Williams' vote. The original set did not include her vote. That was the only change.
I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next order of business is public comment. And if y'all will allow me to go out of order just a little bit, we did have a public comment on the subject of Entergy from Mr. Jeff Van Patten. Mr. Van Patten? If you please state your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Jeff Van Patten, 131 Manor 2 in Maumell. Mayor, actually, I didn't have a specific comment. It was more, it's like a follow-up question of these gentlemen, if I may. Is that all right?
You may ask the council if we could pass that question on to see if they're interested.
Okay, all right. Perfect. Well, my first one was, by the way, thank you, gentlemen, for coming. It's very thorough and we appreciate it so much. My first question is, I noted in your slides that the inspection timeframe is anywhere from two to three years or five years, kinda depending on the cycle. And so I wanted to ask the council if we could request that individuals be assigned to inspect more frequently, particularly the infrastructure that contains wood. Because that tends to rot and if it's buried, as Alderman Scott pointed out, buried deep down a path, it's maybe hard to get to. That would really help because if we have more frequent inspections, maybe you could see it, or this possible breakage could be determined early. And then my closely related question is, could we possibly have special inspections? Maybe one or two people when we've had an event, like Laura come through. You know, I was telling a couple of the Aldermen when I was walking in, there's an old song from the 70s written by Glenn, or performed by Glenn Campbell. It's called "The Wichita Lineman." And there's a reference or a lyric in that song that there's a stretch down south that won't ever stand the strain if we get a heavy snow. So maybe more of a beat cop type of attitude or whatever, you know, if we've had an event come through. So certain folks that are assigned to regularly look after the infrastructure knows, well, this one's probably gonna be weak and then this would fail. And then, lastly, when we had the breakage on the north side of town, particularly on 13th or 15th, 15th? The breakage, was it the 13th or? 13th. Then it also impacted other regions around the city. And I was wondering, is there a technological way to prevent that from happening as often in the future? Maybe with relays or breakers or something so that if one event on one side of town doesn't necessarily create a ripple effect for the rest? And Mayor, those are my three questions and thank you for allowing me to ask them.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Johnson, I might have approximately three questions for you, if you wouldn't mind hopping back up here. And I think you just heard our questions there. If you wouldn't mind just chiming in or following up with that, please, sir.
Okay. All right. Questions presented?
So I guess the questions that I wrote down were, can you check more frequently and then after special events? Is there any opportunity to do special inspections after those weather events?
I can get back with you on that. But Mr. Thompson may be able to offer a little bit more insight on it.
So on the frequency of those events, or not the events, but the cycles where we do the inspections, that's what we, that's kind of our standard for the state, right? Because we wanna make sure that we cover the whole state and we don't leave anyone out. And so that particular timeframe of every five years seems to be what's best for, it's been working, right? And so, but there are times where if there's reasons why we need to get back in and do more frequent inspections, we will and we can. But it's usually because it's being driven by, say, those SADI and SAFI scores that you saw on the screen earlier. But if you look at those scores, you guys are doing pretty good compared to how things have been in the past, but then definitely really well compared to other areas. So that's one thing. As far as special inspections, I don't know if we have a, I'll have to go check, but I don't know if we have a set process for going out and after a storm and doing special inspections. However, I know it is done in areas where there has been damage and then we wanna make sure that there's not any additional damage while we're there repairing a particular area. But that's something that we'll make note of and we'll put on our list to consider.
Great, and I think my last question had to do with some sort of redundancies or so that an outage like this doesn't affect such a broad array. Was that my question, Mr. Van Patten? It sounds like my question, thank you.
And so that's one of the things that we talked about on the slide, those new technology, those reclosers that actually do the automatically testing and making sure that if there's something on that line, it'll, when a fault happens, it'll check a few seconds later to see if that's been cleared. Those are some of the things that we're putting in place right now to help to prevent that. But as you can see, those eight networks or those eight regions that we talked about earlier, they're all interconnected. And so if something happens on one of them, it's typically affecting on all of them as far as an outage goes. But that's where we come back in and we do the switching to make sure we get on as many customers as possible and so that they're not, everyone is not waiting for us to fix the issue that's at hand.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Did those comments inspire any additional questions, comments or concerns from the city council? If, councilmember Mosley?
Just very briefly, I just wanna thank you all for coming out and these kinds of sessions help us stay attuned and understand some of the technical things you all put up with as far as routing and circuits and that sort of thing. And we appreciate that, thank you. I think it helps all of us, thank you.
Well, we appreciate you guys too. And so if there's any other times that we need to come out and do a little bit more detail, maybe we won't take as long as we did this time, but we're happy to do it.
Well, it was a very thorough explanation. We appreciate it. And I see at least one person on social media watching live as, thank you guys for the explanation, calling it super informative. Again, thank you all for coming out. I appreciate the continued dialogue here. We will move on to some remaining public comments. From, the first card I have is from Leslie Rush. The microphone is yours, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, I'm Leslie Rush and I live at Sierra Valley Loop. You ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Hello, everyone. I come to you as a resident of Maumell for 15 years and representing a large group of Maumellians. Upon reviewing this week's council packet, I observed something appalling and honestly embarrassing. As you know, a council member that represents our city submitted a newspaper editorial article that targeted a specific breed. I also understand that you're intelligent enough to know that an editorial gives an opinion on a topic, not facts. Picking on one breed when it isn't even an agenda item is about a big political play and discriminatory as those stating we should defund the police. It stems from a few bad apples. You see, the majority of police officers are outstanding individuals, especially Maumell PD. But a small percentage of them that do something wrong and causes in turns, a select group of people turns on this entire profession and they serve and protect us daily. Targeting one breed instead of strengthening ordinances for all dogs and owner responsibility across the board is ignorant and only backed by fear-driven media. We hope you respectfully listen to our Ward One council member submission while remembering, this isn't editorial, it is opinion. It is coming from isolated events, overgeneralization, misinformation and sensationalized media. This isn't something coming- This isn't something coming from a large sample of his constituents. As previously stated in 2019, it was admitted that the email list was very selective and only 30 emails on that list. Instead, this is coming from an individual that doesn't always keep the interest of his constituents in mind, including suing our very own city and costing us thousands upon thousands of dollars. I ask that you stop looking at the wrong end of the leash. I challenge you to look into reputable sources and ideas that will help us to better understand both pets and the people in our beautiful community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next public comment I have is from Melissa Tubbs. Ms. Tubbs, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Melissa Tubbs. I live on Grenoble Circle here in Mammell. And just to follow up, from what Mr. Rush was actually speaking about, a certain council member did submit that op-ed in this packet for today. I felt it was extremely underhanded. It was not appropriate. We don't know where it came from, didn't know who wrote it, nothing. It had no place since it was not on the agenda today. There's, this was nothing more than political grandstanding. The next time, I think if you attempt to influence your voters in your ward on a particular issue such as this, you might want to educate yourself first with factual information, and then pass that along to your voters. And I'd like you to take a good, long look at this sign, "Opinions are not facts," and they should not be presented as facts. And I'd like for you to take a good, long look at these photos in here, the people, the pets, the families, and there's more. Children, 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 babies, safe babies, children with their companions, every single day, not being harmed, loving their families, protecting their families, always there, from babies to adults, children, babies to adults. You cannot discriminate against a certain breed. Thank you.
Thank you. I have two additional public comment cards that are on an agenda item, so we will get to those at that time. The next order of business is the Planning Commission report. Councilmember Scott?
The first two items on the Planning Commission agenda were old business. They were both having to do with the site and landscape plan for the splash pad and for the drainage and irrigation plan for the splash pad. And once the city approved the special use, these items were brought back and passed unanimously. And just to remind everyone, the parking concern had been addressed with 31 spots available at the City Hall and the informal agreement with the Charter School for Parking Around App Site. Under new business, there is a proposal, an ordinance that'll have first reading tonight, because it was passed to the council with a due-pass recommendation from the Planning Commission to allow a change to the master street plan. And as I was reminded, while there are a lot of concomitant factors regarding this, this is just for the master street plan change, but I do think that this issue connecting the backside of Mammell Valley Estates with Osage Falls up on the hill, taking a road connecting Mammell Valley Drive with Manitou, I think it's going to bring a lot of public comment, and there are a lot of concerns that probably need to be addressed, and I believe that the developers have a plan to address those concerns. So, that was a due pass. Oh, and they did recommend sprinkling in those homes where the fire department has a concern for the safety of the residents, because they can't get all of their types of equipment safely anchored there when they're trying to, you know, if they have house blaze and try to fight a fire there, because the grade is too steep for the equipment to hold on a grade like that. So, there will be more discussion about that, I'm sure, and I'm sure that the fire chief will want to weigh in on that as well. In addition, Mr. Irvin of Swanee Cove came asking for a permit to place an underground pool. Unfortunately, the people who placed the underground pool didn't apply for a permit prior to doing it, and the city code became aware it was four feet over the easement. The pool was already set, filled with water, and that kind of thing. But, because of where it sat on the easement, that permit denial was upheld. So, evidently, that poor man has to move that pool and those thousands of gallons of water, which is really too bad. Reminds us all of how important it is to, if we're going to do any kind of construction, be sure that we check with the city to make sure that no permits are required and that we're doing things the right way. And there was a proposed motion for a due-pass recommendation for the council to change design standards, and we talked about this some last week, from a 10-year to a 25-year storm event, because we're getting more storm events than we have in the past. And that was it.
Thank you very much for a very thorough explanation. And some editorializing. The next item is the procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to unfinished business, we have the second reading of Ordinance 1003, amending a compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance 1003, and ordinance amending the compensation schedule for the elected position of Mayor of the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Just as a reminder, these ordinances were tabled earlier this year. As y'all may recall, city ordinances require that in even number years, the city stand up an elected official salary task force, and that task force is to make recommendations that are to be sponsored by the mayor. I want to say, in the first meeting of May, we did that. Of course, May was probably not the best time to be talking about salary raises with COVID just really getting going. And so, the council tabled that until this meeting. We included the analysis that was provided to the council, and it has been quite a long time, and since Mr. Van Patton, who was the chair of that committee, was going to be present for his comments on the power outages, he also volunteered to stay around in case there was any follow-up questions, since it has been a while. So, is there any discussion? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. So, going, this is on the mayors, and kind of again to provide context, of course, Councilmember Tierney, if your recollection comes back, too, feel free to bring up anything from February. The one thing that jumped out at me on the mayor's salary is when the committee looked at it, we went back into the history to see what the mayor's compensation had been, and if you recall, there was a period of time when the mayor had a salary, and he also had a car allowance, and then they decided to do away with the car allowance and then just to increase the salary. Well, they did that, but the total compensation never changed. And so, since 2015, the mayor's salary has remained the same. And so, that was one of the things for this position that jumped out at me, is that the mayor's position has had no salary or no compensation increase, let me put it that way, no compensation change since 2015. So, that's my one comment on this one.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. Is there any additional comments? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I was just going to ask Mr. Van Patton if he could kind of watch the dollar amounts on the ordinances as they're read, to make sure they are what you recommended as they come up. Because I think last time we did this, we got the wrong number for City Clerk or something like that, and had to go back and do it again the next meeting. So, anyway, just be watchful, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. If there's no further discussion, this matter will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. All right, next order of business is the second reading of Ordinance 1004, amending a compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1004, and ordinance amending the compensation schedule for the elected position of City Clerk Treasurer of the City of Mammell.
Thank you. This is on second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be on third reading at the next council meeting. Next order of business is the second reading of Ordinance 1005, amending a compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1005, and ordinance amending the compensation schedule for the elected position of City Attorney of the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
This item is also on second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, it'll be on third reading at the next city council meeting. The next order of business is the second reading of Ordinance 1006, amending a compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1006, and ordinance amending the compensation schedule for the elected position of City Council Member of the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
Is there any discussion on this issue? Seeing none, it'll be on third reading at the next city council meeting. I think we are now on the third reading of Ordinance 1016 regarding catastrophic leave. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only?
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, ordinance Number 1016, and ordinance of the City of Mammell, Arkansas, adopting provisions for the program and compliance with the Arkansas Uniform Catastrophic Leave Program.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. The first thing I wanted to point out on this, the council had inquired, as had the city, about the status of the former catastrophic leave bank. We knew it had existed, but we were unable to locate any documentation about how much time, if any, was in there. The Ms. Walker in Human Resources did a pretty thorough search and was able to track down documentation showing that the old catastrophic leave bank, as of 2012, which is the most updated timeframe we had, had a total of 7,021.94 hours that was in it at that time. And those are hours that employees would have donated. And so, what I'm requesting, that Ordinance 1016 be amended to set the starting balance for the new leave bank at 7,022 hours, which would basically be the amount that was in the old version plus .06 hours, just to round it off. Additionally, there was some discussion at the last meeting about some other possible changes, and I believe the city attorney wrote those up and included that in the council packet.
I believe the latest version is actually slightly different than the one that's in the packet.
Just slightly different wording on numbers three and four, but I'll let Councilmember Gardner introduce that, and then I'll, I believe you may have the latest version, Councilmember Gardner.
I think I'll put it off the packet version.
Okay.
But I can explain it.
There you go, and I can read it off, as we agreed.
I'll make a motion, and the city attorney will read the motion for me, is that allowed? So, let me explain. First of all, I want to see this catastrophic leave benefit going into effect, but I had a concern about the fact that it was open-ended. There was no, there was no structure put into place that would allow this to terminate at some point for an employee. It could basically be used endlessly. There was nothing that could ever stop it. And so, I got with Ms. Walker in HR, and she did a great job getting the information that I was looking for on our city's long-term disability policy. That is a policy that our city keeps for our city employees, and the way it works is, after an employee has been disabled and out of work for 180 days, at that point, the city's disability policy kicks in and begins paying a portion of their salary. So, that's what any long-term disability policy is for, and generally, the six-month date is when that starts, or 180 days. In this case, what would happen, if a person was on, an employee was on the city's catastrophic leave program and was receiving money from the city, the disability policy would look at that and see that as income, and the disability policy would not pay anything to that employee or would pay out at a reduced rate. Basically, you can't make more money being on disability than if you're working. And so, what I'm proposing is that, under this catastrophic leave ordinance, you'll see Items 3 and 4 there in red on your screen. Is this where the changes are, Madam City Attorney?
Some of them.
Okay. So, not being taken for more than 180 consecutive calendar days, and the reason that we went with that is, on the 180th day is when the city's disability policy kicks in. So, at that point, they're transitioning off of the city's salary onto the disability policy that we're paying for, and we already have in place just for instances like this. And then, the fourth point there, this again kind of limits how much this catastrophic program can be used. It would allow them to have 180 days in any five-year period. So, it's not something that you can just continuously come back and ask for. It limits the amount of days that you can have. And of course, keep in mind, they have to use up any of their own personal sick leave, vacation leave that they have personally before they can even tap into this. So, those are my comments. City Attorney, I'll let you further clarify.
Just to, we did discuss this separately. I discussed it with the mayor, and then separately with Councilmember Gardner. And I believe the latest version that Councilmember Gardner and I agreed on, Number F3, would state not to be taken for more than 180 consecutive calendar days by any individual employee. And then, Number 4 is not, and should be not to exceed, I still have a typo in there, 180 calendar days in any five-year period for any individual employee. Following Number 6, there would be an additional Section 2 prior to renumbering, which would state not to be codified. The council hereby recognizes that under the previous and now terminated catastrophic leave program, there were 7,022 hours of leave available in the leave bank. The council hereby credits those previously donated hours and recognizes that when the leave bank created by this ordinance becomes effective, 7,022 hours shall be available to qualifying employees.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Councilmember Scott?
I was just wondering if this takes it back to first reading?
It will take it back to first reading, because it is a couple of material changes. Of course, the council always has the ability to have, vote to have more than one reading on a particular night.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yeah, okay, so we'll go back to first reading is what they'd like to do. I'd, I'd just like to ask the mayor his opinion on this and, and see, uh, whether he's in agreement with these things. Uh, and I'd, I'd appreciate your opinion, thank you.
Uh, it, so, w- with regard to adding the leave bank, or adding the leave back in, I'm absolutely, uh, in favor of that. It, it was time that, uh, employees, uh, donated to the program, uh, and just because the city stopped, uh, using that doesn't mean that that leave should go away, in my opinion. So I think we should credit that back. With regards to the, um, time constraints, it seems to make sense to me. It's, it's one of those areas where, this is one of those times where it's very valuable to have a diverse group of people on the board and someone who's an expert in, um, these sort of, uh, benefit packages, uh, as I know what Councilmember Gardner is, uh, it makes sense. I'd hate to, uh, have the city pay for a long-term disability program that then is not able to be used. Um, so, it seems to make sense to me.
Okay, so you're, you are in agreement with all these changes and, or you would favor them?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
Councilmember Tierney?
Uh, yes, since we've, uh, been through this program and, uh, vetted it fairly well, uh, can you think of any reason why we should not go ahead and advance it, uh, through the readings tonight?
Can I think of a reason?
Yeah.
Or can I think of a?
We should not.
I, one reason someone might not want to do that, so that everyone can, uh, provide public comment on the changes, should it arise in the next council packet. I, I think that's traditionally why this council and board has been hesitant to rush things through. There are times where it's a good idea, but I th- I think that would be one reason someone might not want to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Not necessarily my opinion, but. Was there a motion, uh, to make the amendments that the city attorney?
I, yeah, I don't, well, I never verbalized it, I don't think. Do I need, would you like me to read off the entire changes? Okay, I would like to make a motion that we amend ordinance number ten sixteen as described by the city attorney. Would that work?
Did I hear a second? I think I did. Okay, so there was a motion, a second. Is there anyone, uh, who does not understand what the motion is? I will be happy to read off the amended changes. All right, so I've got a motion to amend ordinance ten sixteen. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed?
Yes.
Please say no. Motion carries unanimously. I believe that does set it back to first reading. If there was any desire to, uh, waive the subsequent readings, we'd need a motion and a second to do that. Seeing none, uh, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. Outstanding. Next order of business is the second reading of ordinance ten fifteen, clarifying actions considered to be a nuisance. Madam City Clerk Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number ten fifteen, an ordinance clarifying the actions to be considered as a nuisance pursuant to chapter thirty-eight of the Mammell City Code, providing certain exceptions and for other purposes.
Outstanding. So this is the, uh, the noise ordinance we were talking about. It is on second reading, so it'll go back to third reading at the next city council meeting, but I've got some public comments. Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes, I, I wanted to ask the, uh, city attorney a couple of more questions here. I've, uh, I've been uncomfortable with this ordinance just because the, uh, it would apply to residential and not commercial, uh, uh, in here in Mammell, and I'm a little concerned about the, uh, country club area that's getting a new car wash that'll have a, a loud, uh, blower on it and that sort of thing, and this ordinance would not apply to that, that loud blower motor that, that may, may cause a problem. I don't know if it will or not. Uh, and then there's some other, uh, commercial developments over there that I'm a little concerned with, but I, uh, didn't get any support from the council last meeting for, uh, making a change to including both, but I did want to ask the, the city attorney, uh, one, one thing that she mentioned, and I think it was probably the main reason why most people did not, uh, provide a second to my motion, was that it would be, if, if we applied that to the commercials, that it would be, could be constituted as a taking. Uh, it would, it would prevent a commercial from being able to use their property for something that they've been approved to do, and I understand that. And I would like to ask her if, if, you know, we'd be applying it now to residential areas, and why would that not be a taking to the residential areas too, to apply that to, um, uh, at this point?
Well, I think it would be akin to a taking because you're, you're changing the fundamental use that they can make of the property. If you have property that's been approved by all appropriate city channels to operate as a car wash, um, then i- if you're taking away their right to use their property for the purpose for which they constructed it, I mean, that's, you're, you're taking a substantial economic benefit away from them.
Yes, ma'am, I, I understand. I was asking you about the residential's. Would that not be a taking from the residential's?
A residential property can still be used for residential purposes. Having a, a noise ordinance that prevents excessive, you know, music or equipment usage at certain hours of the day doesn't change the fact that they can still successfully use that as a residence and that they can, um, use it for the purpose that it's always been permitted to be used for.
Okay.
And there's always been a noise o- ordinance. This is just to clarify and, um...
Right.
Make this a little more easily enforceable.
And, and generally, I, I'm, I'm very much for the ordinance. I think it's a good ordinance. Uh, but I, I am just trying to make sure that we're applying this equally and fairly, uh, across the border, uh, and, and to protect the residents as much as possible from any unexpected noises. Uh, the, we do have in our code of, uh, ethics, something about, it says, uh, "City Council shall do everything in their power to ensure equal nondiscriminatory and impartial law enforcement throughout the city." And, uh, I, I would assume that somehow or another, this clause, uh, would not, not apply in this case here, is that?
Well, the, the very purpose of zoning laws is that there are certain areas that we want to have u- uses be designated for, so that we don't have, you know, you're not next to a factory if that's not what, you know, if you plan to be in a residential area, then it's designated for that use. Um, the whole purpose of zoning is that things are, you know, done in an orderly fashion and that beneficial uses to society are allowed just in appropriate areas.
Okay, so it's more, more, uh, consistent, nondiscriminatory and impartial within the zone, that, that, that that allows some dis- differences, is that correct?
Right. I mean, zoning always means that you're gonna allow some uses in one place that you're not gonna allow somewhere else.
Okay, all right. I, I think that's, uh, that, that answers my question. I'm not gonna make that motion unless anybody else is willing to give me a second here. But, uh, so, uh, thank you for your time, Ms. Tierney.
Councilmember Tierney?
Uh, yes, I'd also like to ask for clarification from the city attorney on, um, section F, uh, dealing with the construction and lawn maintenance equipment and the hours that they're gonna be allowed to operate.
Sorry, you're, the number ten?
Yes.
Noise associated with construction, uh, property.
Lawn maintenance between the hours of seven AM and ten PM is, it's an exception, so it would be permitted during those hours.
Right. Uh, to me, it seems like, uh, lawn equipment going all the way to like ten o'clock at night seems to be a little bit late. I don't know how the rest of the council would feel like this, but to me, it seems like eight o'clock would be a better cutoff time of, if people are concerned about noise and Thanksgiving awake, uh, nine o'clock at night to have construction and, uh, lawn equipment still running seems a little bit late. Uh, I, I don't know if anybody else is gonna support this idea, but I'd like to make a motion that we change that ten PM to eight PM.
Quick, uh, point of clarification, was that eight PM for just, so that's subsection ten, just changing it from ten PM to eight PM?
Right, that seems a bit late at night to have that kind of noise still going on.
And I will note that there's also provision in E that is, um, to be at seven AM is when the noise is cut off for, uh, like, any type of devices, radios, audio, video players, musical instruments, et cetera.
Yeah, uh, the music, I, I think people would be a little bit more tolerant of than, uh, you know, somebody could play in the music lab and, uh, maybe a lawnmower going off outside the window. And I, I mean, maybe you want to reconsider that one too, I don't know. But, uh, at this point, I'd like to concentrate on the, on the, uh, number two.
Okay. So you all have heard the motion, is there a second?
Uh, I, I would not second.
That particular motion, but I would for nine o'clock.
So do you have a second for eight o'clock? Going once, going twice, no motion for that. Is there, Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes, if you would like to remake that motion for nine o'clock, I would second your motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we change it to nine o'clock.
I've got a motion to amend the time to nine o'clock? Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, my one concern with this is that, uh, the rest of the ordinance is structured for that ten PM to seven AM timeframe, and I'm, I'm leery of having multiple timeframes here for different activities. You know, in the summertime, it gets, it stays daylight till nine o'clock, but that said, um, I don't typically hear any lawn equipment after eight or nine o'clock. I just, me personally, I don't. So, I don't see a problem with extending it to ten because I don't see a lot of people out mowing their yards after, uh, nine o'clock. So, that's just my one comment there.
Councilmember Williams?
Well, I, it's my opinion that, um, this would be incredibly hard to enforce if there are different time, times for different activities for law enforcement. They're gonna have to go around, they're gonna have to memorize what you can do and what time. I think a blanket time for everybody is, is, would be a little bit more efficient and streamlined.
Thank you.
So, you know, so I think if you change, we're gonna have to change it all.
I will just point out that, uh, the ten PM, I believe, I took from another, I, I looked, of course, at several different cities, Fayetteville, Cabot, Bryant, I believe, and ten PM was fairly standard. That was why I chose that one.
Thank you. We have a motion to change the time from, uh, ten PM to nine PM. Is there any additional discussion on that? Councilmember Scott?
I'm sorry, I was wondering if, uh, Councilmember Williams was thinking that maybe we should just blanket to nine o'clock, or whether we should eschew nine o'clock totally?
Oh, I think a blanket nine o'clock would be fine, or a blanket ten o'clock, but I don't think there should be different times for different activities.
Yeah, I, I kinda like the idea of nine o'clock just because of summer hours and, um, you know, people being able to be outside and working until dark, like roofers and...
I'd, I'd be willing to admit my motion could not affect the both.
To, I feel like we're in inception, we've got motions, not a motion. So what are we talking about, amending?
I don't know where we are.
What are you talking about, amending, Councilmember Tierney?
Both, uh, this and the, and the section dealing with music and outside noise. It should then affect the both, uh, categories.
You sound so old.
I, I mean, I will point out that, that there is, I'm sorry, I, I probably shouldn't give my opinion, I mean, there's a reason I think that it's ten o'clock. That's kind of what people associate with like prime time television and all those things. I think you, you're gonna have a lot more enforcement to go if you, if you put it at nine o'clock because people having normal outdoor barbecues and parties and things like that are gonna go past nine o'clock. So, we can just expect that we will enforce it more often if we go to nine o'clock.
Thank you. So I, uh, Councilmember Tierney's seeking to amend his motion to include all the times to nine. Who was it, what, that was the original second, uh, Councilmember Tierney's?
Uh, I didn't.
Would you amend your, um, second as well?
For what? I'm sorry.
I think it's more appropriate if he withdraws the original motion.
Let's do that. Uh, would you like to withdraw your motion?
Yes, I would.
There we go, so now... As I understand it, you would like to make a motion now?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the time from ten o'clock to nine o'clock on both, uh, sections of the, uh, ordinance.
Do I hear a second on that? I can't tell if you're hitting your button because everyone's mics are on.
Turn it on, that'd be great. I'm, I'm not gonna admit, I'm not gonna second it this time, I'm sorry. I, I, I was thinking blower motors and lawn mowers and things like that and, and social activities, I, I think they should be able to go till ten o'clock, so, uh, I'm kind of in agreement with, uh, City Attorney Krebs, sorry.
All right, do I hear a second? Going once, going twice. Uh, uh, motion fails forward, lack of a second. Uh, I do, let me clear the board. I do have a, uh, public comment card that has come in since we've moved on to this discussion item. Mr. John Jones? Mr. Jones, come on down, if you could please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is John Jones, I live at two oh five, Mammell Valley. Uh, I just wondered if, this is a question really, if, if you, if we had considered, we have a lot of residents that have these natural gas generators that one across the street from me puts off well over a hundred and twenty decibels and it'll run day and night, and with the recent power outage, I just wondered if you guys had considered those generators because they run all night.
Madam City Attorney? How do your gener- generators come into play here?
Just looking at all the exceptions to see if there are any. Uh, would that, would that be considered emergency work? I'm probably not.
Would not emergency work, but presumably if a generator's going on, there's... Something not going well.
That's true.
They are much louder than a Briggs and Stratton lawnmower, if that's any concern.
Well, I mean, that, as it's currently written, that would, they would not be permitted, so that would probably be a, a good amendment to be made.
Councilmember Scott?
If someone is on life support equipment, generators are life-saving. I mean, not everyone is in that category, but how do we choose who's on life-saving equipment and who's not on life saving, saving equipment, who has a generator?
There is an exception for the emission of sound and performance of emergency work, which would probably take care of that situation, but, um, I don't know, it would take care of just everybody who would like to have air conditioning and that, and that.
Yeah, it's just how, how do we know?
Some people might consider that emergency.
Yeah, just how do we determine that from the outside?
Uh, it sounds like I'm hearing a motion, uh, to include an exception for generators operating when the power is out. Did I, was anyone wanting to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Would that address the concern?
Well, he said that would just be number twelve, that would be added, uh, on the app, just generators operating during power outage.
Thank you for that point. Thank you.
Something to consider is, is the decibels because some of them are quiet and some of them aren't. And so, that, you know, to me, having a, a, a natural gas generator and, and I'm just, you know, our bedroom's eight feet away from it and it's vibrating the windows all night long, I think that's an issue. I, I, as a resident, like you said earlier, I'm, I'm, I'm expecting a certain amount of quiet, you know, I, I, I... What's acceptable, you know, uh, lawnmowers during the day and during the, uh, uh, you know, daylight hours into the evening, but... know, daylight hours into the evening, but to have something run continuously all night long, eight feet from your window, is, is, you know, a, a little excessive, if it's a, if it's an emergency situation, I, I understand that, but if it goes on for five days, you know, am I supposed to get a hotel room? You know, what?
I'm confused whose side you're on here.
I, I, I'm just presenting this, I, I, I feel like...
No, no, I appreciate it, I'm just being silly.
I didn't think a lot, thought, had gone into it when I was listening to you guys, so, uh, I, I may be wrong for coming up and even talking about it, but, the, the, the issue is that I have two generators across the street, Dr. Austin has one, his sister had one, and when they both click on, you know, I've got a hundred and sixty decibels all night long, so...
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilmember Fackler's name?
I think what we don't have is a building ordinance that says anything about that at all, that would monitor that, and how would somebody know what, what decibel systems their generator put out, you know, that they're, they, they wouldn't know that, second of all, if our power went out for a week like it did in Southern Arkansas, and it was a hundred degrees outside, I'd be running a generator, or I'd be at a hotel, um, you're gonna lose all your food, it's gonna be a mess inside the house, so we're kind of between a rock and a hard place in this situation, um, talking, because I understand if he's got one of these generators eight feet outside of his window, it's not gonna be quiet, but if your neighbor's willing to come and enjoy the air conditioning, that's a different story.
That's true, but, yeah, I think the iPhone has an app that will give you the decibel reading.
Yes, sir.
It, it does, but I don't think you'd, you'd know what it was until it was installed, probably.
Yeah, um, so, so you're saying generators, you buy generators, you can get them based on their, say, who you got one?
I don't, it, it probably does, I mean, I got, if you get a Honda inverter, you can put it in the middle of the room here, and then I could talk, but these, these ones that are run by, by natural gas are quite loud, um, and lots and lots of folks in Marmell have them, lots and lots of folks in Marmell have them.
Councilmember Holt?
I think, um, the ordinance and the general, uh, intention of the ordinance, that we're talking about a nuisance, um, uh, um, sound, or, or, so, you know, to, like we say, with a generator, it's, it's not intended to be aggravate the, uh, neighborhood, perhaps someone could, uh, help them find a way to, uh, muffle the, uh, noise to some extent, uh, I have had in my neighborhood during the daytime, um, some gentleman using a, uh, wood cutter, um, machine to, um, chop up wood, so that is a nuisance, this is something that the people wouldn't use their, uh, generator if they didn't absolutely have to, so I, I would find it difficult to, while I sympathize with the neighbors that what a nuisance it is, it'd be hard for me to say, um, that you can't use it, so I would not be able to vote against that.
Thank you, sir, Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, it kinda begs the question, uh, if we limit the decibels of a generator, are those that already exist grandfathered in, or do we make them, change them out, or, no, I mean, that's thousands and thousands of dollars of investment. That was rhetorical.
Thank you, ma'am, Councilmember Gardner?
I just wanna make sure I know what the motion is that we're voting on, we are amending this to exclude generators, so we will not be measuring the sound off of generators, is that the motion?
Only when operating during power outage.
Right, so, yeah, so, uh, you know, the energy reps have left, but, you know, we have short-term memories, we, we think we have a lot of power problems, and we actually don't, we just have had several back-to-back, but, you know, they showed the reliability there, I've lived in other places where I had a lot of power outages, and so, I mean, we're talking about a narrow window of time here, so I'm totally fine excluding home generators in this ordinance, if that, you know, helps, so, in that sense, we don't need to measure the decibel levels of a generator if we're excluding them, is that correct? That's what we're voting on?
I have a, a motion to second to step generators, I probably get during power outage and, and then commit the motion.
Yes, thank you.
Correct, so, a, a motion in favor of, a, a, a yes vote means generators are allowed when the power's out, just to be clear, if, a no vote means they're allowed as long as they're under that decibel rating that we're already using, is that correct? Okay. Is there any further discussion on this motion? If not, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries, ordinance number 1017 is amended, Madam City Attorney, does that put it back on first reading?
Uh, I believe it's a material change, so I believe it would, should put it back to first reading.
1015, not 1017, thank you, so that, this will be on first reading at the next city council meeting? All right. Next order of business is, new business, the first reading of ordinance 1017, amending a master street plan, Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marmell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1017, an ordinance amending the master street plan map for the City of Marmell, Arkansas, to downgrade to the classification of a specific section of proposed Marmell Valley Drive and Phase 19 of Marmell Valley Estates Edition from a collector to a local street and for other purposes.
Thank you, all right, I have two public comments, uh, that appear to be on this agenda item, starting first with Wes Lott. Thank you, sir, if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Wes Lott, 154 Manitou. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Councilmembers, uh, basically, uh, we just wanna kinda voice concerns, I, I realize this has been in the master plan for over twenty years, I believe, and I believe they're asking for a five percent grade in the variance, if I'm correct on that, I'm not sure, uh, but, one of the things that we wanted to propose is maybe altering the street plan to include cul-de-sacs instead of completing the street, also rerouting maybe a walk trail or a golf cart trail that emergency vehicles can negotiate between the two neighborhoods, if that's been an issue, uh, something that's been, uh, brought up in some of our, uh, neighborhood meetings, uh, we'd also like to request a traffic study and a feasibility study for stop signs at Onata and Manitou, uh, and also at, uh, Manitou and Marmell Valley, um, I've lived in, in Marmell since 2007, I've lived in Osage, Manitou area since 2014, and we've seen a drastic increase in traffic in that area due to construction, and also onlookers, uh, driving the scenic routes up there, especially the, the, uh, weekend, uh, timeframes, uh, also have seen a increase in children, the, small children that live in that area that also are using, uh, the roadways, I've been a law enforcer for twenty years, uh, some of the issues we see when you join neighborhoods with points of, one point of egress and, uh, entrance, uh, is you see an increase in crime, so we'd also like to request a crime study, uh, statistical study between Marmell Valley and the Osage area, to see what property crimes have been occurring, and the frequency of property crimes in the Marmell Valley area and in, in the Osage Manitou area, uh, bringing all those things together, we'd also like to see if you'll table this till at least studies are done, before you make a decision on that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir, you, uh, requested, uh, a speed study or traffic study for the intersections of Manitou and what?
Well, I'd like to ta, uh, request a traffic study for Manitou and the areas, especially around Navajo, uh, and, uh, and, uh, Osage and Manitou and Marmell Valley, uh, we'd like to see if we can get stop signs up there, uh, there was an incident about a couple weeks ago, uh, just crossing over Manitou on Marmell Valley towards the crest of the hill, uh, a lady was almost hit in a stroller, with, uh, carrying her stroller and a child, walking, walking her child in that area with a, somebody that wasn't paying attention, uh, distracted driver, um, and I think some of these are gonna be brought up in the, the next meeting as well, we've got a, we've got about twenty people that have voiced concerns about this, so, with the increased traffic and possibly the increased criminal activity in there.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next public comment card I have is from, oh boy, Trisha Morin? Thank you, come on down, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, uh, my name's Trisha Morin, and I live at 25 Sagamore Court, um, kind of on the heels of what, uh, he just said, um, and first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak, um, from what I understand, the reasons the city wants to press on with the road plan are, it's already been decided twenty years ago, emergency vehicles need to have a way to move between the two subdivisions, um, without using Odom, and there needs to be two ways to enter and leave Osage Falls in case the Manitou entrance is ever blocked, that's what I understand, I also understand that the land has changed over the years, so the road couldn't be installed per the original plan anyway, um, the fire chief has explained that houses built on the street with the obtuse grade would not get the full protection of the fire department, as he suggested, um, that the city encouraged the developer to install sprinkler systems with the developer, um, and I believe R, meaning R, the City Planning Commission, City Council, and the residents, I feel like our main goal should be to fashion roadways in a way that would allow the developer to build houses on his land, that can still have the full protection of the fire department resources, I can't in good conscience support anything otherwise, I don't think anyone moving into Marmell would think to research whether their particular residence has the full protection of the fire department, so in good conscience, we can't do this to unsus, unsuspecting future Marmelians, I understand that the, the developer bought this land as part of his business, he has the right to make a profit from that land, I fully support that, at the same time, I hope we can reach a solution that minimizes safety hazards, the Marmell Police Chief was kind enough to meet with a group of neighbors yesterday and, um, let us point out some of the safety concerns that already exist, it would be greatly exacerbated without, with the increased traffic if the road is installed as proposed, and I'm sure the assumption is that the traffic won't increase as this, uh, proposed road really wouldn't be used, but I assure you that the road won't sit dormant, if you really think no cars will use it, then by golly, let's put in, like he said, a golf cart path that police cars could easily use in times of emergency, or if, like, a tornado hit and the Manitou entrance was blocked, you could have a vehicle go in and evacuate people from Osage using a golf cart path, so that's what I would propose, um, so, uh, I think most of the traffic that we get through Osage are sightseers, contractors, and golf carts that are joyriding, who would surely use that road, uh, that some claim would have no usage, since it would allow them to avoid using the highly-traveled Odom, uh, especially the golf carts to kinda travel through the neighborhoods to, for enjoyment, given all of this, um, I believe this is a better solution that can benefit the residents, who will be hurt by unaddressed safety concerns, the developer, whom I support in profiting from developing the land, and the city that has the responsibility, responsibility to protect citizens and use tax money wisely, I urge the city to consider a plan that allows for golf cart paths to be installed to connect the two, two subdivisions, and to end those two subdivisions with a cul-de-sac, um, and kinda on the heels of what he said, I do request that we do the full three readings, I know you guys have the ability to waive that, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, and so, just a, a reminder of what is being considered, the, the, the master street plan currently shows a connection, but that connection is a collector, uh, and so the, uh, request coming before the city council changes that collector status connection to a, uh, local road or residential road, uh, with that, is there any discussion on this issue? Seeing none, this will be on Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna have to watch the, uh, planning commission meeting, I think, to, to get a better handle on this, uh, it's a little, little unclear to me what's going on, I need to get up there and drive around, see, see what these streets look like, I wanted to before the meeting, and I, I got delayed, um, so I, I'm assuming that the issue is, is that, uh, there's gonna need to be a street that connects on through that's been on the master street plan, and the residents maybe really not want one, but if, we need one for fire reasons, is that correct, is that, is that kinda in a nutshell? Uh... There, there's currently not a street in there, is that correct?
Correct, correct, well, so Marmell Valley is unconnected on the, in that, that portion there.
All right.
And there is a, a representative, the applicant here, um, if, if there's any questions from him, I almost forgot, moved on without that, um, and perhaps, um, he would be able to explain, i- i- do you have anything to say, or are we good?
If you could just shed a little light on what's going on, that'd be great, I, I don't know if anybody else shares my, my lack of understanding.
I'm Brian Dale with White Daters and Associates, um, the office is at 24 Rawling Circle in Little Rock, um, we represent Gibb Carpenter and his partners for the Marmell Valley LLC, um, they are ready to construct the next phase, and that would be to connect Marmell Valley Drive from the existing Marmell Valley subdivision up to, I think it's Osage Hills, it might be Osage Falls, but up to Osage, and the road, um, is built on each end, to connect it with the existing conditions will be too steep to meet a collector standard, so, to connect the road, as we visited with staff, we either need to reduce the road to a collector road to meet the grade requirements, or we need to revise the master street plan to not have the roads connected, we've, we've worked with staff quite a bit on this, because I believe my developers are okay with either situation, but staff, because of safety concerns and fire concerns, feel the neighborhood needs to be connected for time of travel, so they don't have to circle out to Odom, and so I believe the request that's before city council right now is to revise it to a residential street so we can make the connection.
Okay, thank you very much, it's pretty clear, thank you.
Thank you, and just to follow up with that, one of the, um, I think it's important to note that right now, if a subdivision is going in, and there's more than thirty homes, I wanna say is the number, you need that second ingress and egress, um, is a requirement, um, and that, there's a few more than thirty homes in that area, um, with that said, Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor, um, while this isn't necessarily about this subject, it's, it's related, Mr. Lott, uh, brought this up, um, I think this would be a good time for us, while we are looking at this, to also consider what changes might be made to benefit those in the Osage, um, neighborhood, uh, from a traffic perspective, uh, you know, uh, Manitou, as it continues on up the hill, there's still a lot of room for development back in there, um, for homes that have not been completed yet, uh, and so one of the suggestions, I believe, was to look at a stop sign at the Marmell Valley and Manitou area, if I believe I understood him correctly. Marmell Valley Drive, yeah, and, uh, so, I, I know if we, if we're talking about connecting Marmell Valley Drive, um, this isn't necessarily related to this, but it's right at the top of the hill, and so this would be something that would need to go to the traffic, uh, committee, um, to be reviewed, but, you know, if you're going to look at changing things and, and putting in a stop sign to increase safety, uh, I think now would be the time to do it, rather than wait till more homes get developed further back in both of these neighborhoods, so, I just wanted to throw that in there, I think that's a, that's a valid point, that we should look at that at some point down the road here.
Thank you, is there any additional discussion? All right, this will be on second reading at the next council meeting, the next order of business is Resolution 2020 dash 26, um, a resolution to certify the taxation rate for the tax year 2020, Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Marmell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2020 dash 26, a resolution certifying to the Plaski County, Arkansas County Clerk, the rates of taxation to be levied by the City of Marmell on taxable real and personal property within the City of Marmell, Arkansas, for the tax year 2020 and for other purposes.
Do you approve Resolution 2020 dash 26, Senator?
I've got a motion and a second on that, just, uh, really quickly, this is just recertifying the tax rates as they've been, this isn't increasing or decreasing, it's just an annual housekeeping issue, is there any discussion on the motion to approve Resolution 2020 dash 26? Is there any discussion on the motion to approve Resolution 2020-26? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. The next order of business is bicycle safety, and I will let Councilmember Williams explain what's up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a constituent email me about some concerns that she had at Lake Willistee, and she's out walking her dog, that some cyclists were not obeying cycling rules and pretty much not considering pedestrians at all, no walkers at all, running, almost running over their kids, almost running over their dogs. And actually, since I got this email, I've talked to several other people who have said the same thing. The, I have here the writing on, from the Arkansas State Highway and Transportation Department, Arkansas State Police and Department of Tourism, and they say that riding on paths, the rule is paths are wider than sidewalks, but you should still ride cautiously, ride on the right and yield to pedestrians, use caution when passing other path users, pass on the left and announce your intentions or alert them with a bike veil. Extra caution should be taken when passing children and animals. There are apparently some cyclists that, and maybe Councilmember Mosley has seen them out there, too. I mean, you're out there quite a bit yourself, and had to, you know, jump out of the way when a cyclist is coming by, because they're not being aware and taking care of the fact, well, it's not an open road, it's just a park. It's not some, you know, we're not running a race here, or, you know, a cycle, a cycle race or mileage or anything. So I was going to see and ask the council what your thoughts are on putting signs up in, like, at Lake Willistee that would hopefully cause, bring this to the attention of some cyclists, to cause them to slow down and take care of where, and be aware of where they are, something that says, you know, be mindful of pedestrians and children and their animals. I mean, just a couple of signs out at the lake might would help wonders in cutting down on a lot of that activity.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I would support that very much. Yeah, my wife and I, we walk two miles a day in under 30 minutes, which is about as fast as my legs will go. And I do that for a reason. It's something that's been required for my health for 25 years, and so I walk every day. The City of Marmel, yeah, there are a few bicycles. We have not had nearly the problem with bicycles here in Marmel, as we have at, say, Two Rivers. We walk a lot at Two Rivers on the weekends, and the bicycles are just wild there. And I think what you're saying is you're reading some type of guidelines or whatever to where pedestrians have the right of way and the bicycles should be yielding the right of way.
The fact that, you know, at Two Rivers, the lake, the paths are way far, a lot wider than we have.
Yeah, they're wider, but boy, the-
It's basically a walking path.
We occasionally have bikes go by us at 40 or 50 miles an hour, and they just spring them out.
And I think at Two Rivers, you actually have a center, a center line.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, yeah, I would support that. I think, I think that's a good idea. I think, I think that's part of the problem at some of these places, is just that the bikers do not realize they don't have the right of way. I think in a lot of cases, they think they do.
Right, right. Thank you.
So, yes, I would support that.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner?
Yeah, I think there's some, kind of some standard rules of the road for cycling that you might, we might be able to find some. I know at Two Rivers Park and other places down there, they have some kind of courtesy rules for cyclists to follow. And additionally, you'll see lane markings sometimes, where we'll give instructions for bikers to pass on the left, like you were talking about. So even some, I wouldn't say do a line down the middle, but just, they have lane markings that they can put down, reminding cyclists to pass at certain points. So I think there's multiple ways you can do that. But at the end of the day, you've got to depend on people to be nice and have common sense, too, so.
Outstanding. Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. Is there anyone that objects to adding additional signage at Lake Willistee? All right, we can get it added?
Thank you all. Thank you a lot.
Next order of business is Mayor's comments. So I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you my new Chief of Staff, Sarah Smith, who started today, and we, I think we started with a bang with an Infrastructure and Homeland Security Roundtable in Little Rock, where she probably said, oh, Lord, what am I getting myself into? But with that, I'd like Sarah to just come up and say hi and tell you a little bit about herself.
Hello. I'll keep this brief, but I did want to take the opportunity just to say thank you. I've been so warmly welcomed today, just in the last 12 hours. That's all I've been here for. But it's just been such a wonderful welcome. I feel, I already feel like I belong. And as a resident of Marmel, I'm so proud to be a part of this community. Just, it's a wonderful place for me and other residents to raise their children. It's a great place for my family. I feel like we take care of each other in this community, and I love that. It's also a place where I see people that care deeply about making this a great place, and they also feel heard. And so I'm just very excited and thrilled to have this opportunity to join in investing even further into this community, and I look forward to it. So thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, welcome. Thank you. Thirteen hours. You've been here now 13 hours. Fun fact, Sarah lives in the same house as the former Chief of Staff did when he became Chief of Staff. So with 7,500 homes in the city, it's just kind of odd that that would happen. So it is a sign. So, well, anyways, we will move on to Councilmember comments, and I'll start first with Councilmember Mosley.
Yes, sir. I will make a comment here. Okay, you got me on. Yeah, I think my comment was kind of addressed a little bit under general comments. What I wanted to do is I've seen signs that indicate that the pit bull issue will probably come up again in the next year. I have a feeling, that was a very close vote last time, and we chose to keep the ban on specific breeds in place here in Marmel. And I think that'll come up again, and my purpose for putting that editorial in here, and it was a very harsh editorial. The Gazette addressed that very, very definitely, I think. And so I, that's, you know, they hit it, they hit it hard, I guess, is what I'm saying. But I think, you know, the point of the article was why more communities don't ban the, that particular breed escapes them. And I think, I think in some ways, if this comes up again, there's, I think there are people that are running for the council that will support lifting that ban. And I, what I would like to do is just encourage all those that are running for the council to put forth their opinion on that, that situation, just so the voters, I think, I think it, the voters should know how everybody stands, so that they can, I think that should be a consideration in who they vote for. So that's, that's why I put it in there. Perhaps the article was a little harsh. My purpose was to kind of give the residents a heads up and, and to be questioning those candidates to see, see where they stand on that issue, because I think it is an important issue.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional Councilmember comments?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I apologize, Mayor. I tried to raise my hand, but it didn't offer me that option. As you know, and many people know, I lost a left lung to lung cancer, and that's why I'm not at the meeting, is because I can't wear that mask for very long because of my oxygen. I am on the October list for the Planning Commission liaison for, for October. And I don't think I'm going to be able to do the subcommittee or the Planning Commission meeting this month because of the mask, for the same reason I'm not at the council meeting tonight. So I'm just offering that up. I would be happy to take somebody else's place, once I don't have to wear that mask, if they would step up and help with it.
Councilmember Scott?
I would be willing to do the October meetings. I have December, and I got to thinking, you know, I'm not running again, so I won't, unless I stand up in the audience and give the January report. It would be better if I did October rather than December, but I'll keep December if Councilmember Saunders doesn't feel that she's going to be able to do that at that time. But I'll be happy to take October for him.
Great. Councilmember Scott has October. Does anyone feel like doing December?
Well, I have no problem doing December, as long as I don't have to wear that mask for an extended period of time. I'll pass out if I wear it very long. I've done it too many times. So I'll be happy to take December, and if we still have to wear a mask, I may have to step down from that, too. So I apologize. It's just my health.
We'll do that swap. Councilmember Saunders, if it turns out that you still have to wear a mask, I'm sure someone else here can take that over.
And thank you, Councilmember Scott.
You're welcome.
Is there any additional Councilmember comments? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I wanted to ask you to do a follow-up. Last council meeting, we talked about the Department of Motor Vehicles and the use of the council chambers.
Yes.
Did you have a chance to check with them?
I failed that mission. I thought about it a million times, and I said, oh, I've got to do that today. And then today became tomorrow, and now it is two weeks later.
Yeah, I actually came to pick up my packet today, and it was quite a scene. The council chambers was pretty much full of people waiting for DMV. And actually, I could hear Christie, I think she was on a microphone, and she was lecturing the people that were in here. I don't know what they had done wrong, but she was giving them a pretty good lecture about how this was just a courtesy being provided by the city and that they, you know, best not ask for a lot of special treatment. And she did it in a very nice manner. But she did come out and told me that usually there's about 500 people that come through here a day for DMV, and she had had maybe 300 already come through at noon. That's a lot of people coming through the council chambers. What it does is it puts a risk, not only on, like, the people in our audience here are probably not aware that 500 people from all over central Arkansas have been in those council chambers this afternoon and in your chair. I know that some of the initial COVID was caught by somebody sitting in a pew of a church where somebody had been sitting that had it. So I don't consider that real safe for our, for our audience, and I don't consider it safe for those people, too, because they're also taking on, they're in a location which is also occupied by the city, so they're getting twice the risk of exposure, those, those people that are here for DMV. So this issue really does need to be resolved, I think. And from a personal standpoint, Councilman Saunders shared some of his situation, but I've got, I've got an underlying issue myself. I've got a particular body organ that was damaged 25 years ago. My doctors have said do not get any more damage to that organ, and it's one of the organs that the COVID attacks. And so I cannot get the COVID. There's some amount of risk in everything I do. I don't mind taking a minor risk. If it's just City Hall, city business going on, I'll come in here and do this. But if we're going to parade 500 people through these council chambers, and I don't know, they may have even been sitting up here, it becomes a moderate to significant risk for me to attend the meeting. So if, if DMV is not interested in helping us out in this regard, I'll probably make an emotion. We go back to Zoom, because I would like to attend city council meetings as well as anybody else, and I think Saunders would like to do the same.
Thank you, sir.
That's my tired try.
It's my understanding that the numbers are closer to 100 a day. I don't know how many they had through today. I did get a chance to talk to one of the folks here, and they said there has been a big increase in the amount of, in their workload. And some of that had to do with an increased number of people coming, and others had to do with an increased, was it a server capacity and just the length of the average ticket? And two had shut down for a while. I think those two are back open. But, and so I was curious if, if that was just a normal load, or if there was some change that had occurred, and they've seen an uptick as well. It was theorized that maybe we're seeing a lot more people buying trailers and that sort of stuff than before, and so they've got to come register their vehicle. I apologize, Councilmember Mosley. I will, I've sent myself an email to look into that, and I will have a response to that.
Thank you very much. And if there's anything I can help in, I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to meet with them or anything else. So if you need any help, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you. Any additional Councilmember comments? All right, we'll move on to City Attorney comments.
No comments.
Madam City Clerk?
No comment.
If that's the case, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, no. Motion carries. We adjourn.